Good evening. Tonight is the October tenth, twenty twenty-three Lakeville Select Board Meeting, also acting as the Wage and Personnel Board. Is there anybody recording the meeting besides Lake Cam who was streaming it this evening? There's not. Okay, remember Fabian is ill. She won't be with us this evening, so we've got Members Carboni and Day present this evening. We may or may not adjust the agenda as we go through depending on some of the items with her not being here this evening. So start off with Agenda Item Number One, Select Board Announcements. This is the first Select Board meeting we've had since the events that unfolded on September twenty-ninth of this year. I just wanted us to take a moment to really commend the actions of Lakeville Police Department and Massachusetts State Police. Obviously, that's an ongoing investigation, so we wouldn't be saying any details, but I think we're all really proud of how our officers and how MSP responded, especially the luck of them being on their way home and having to pass through that evening. I just want to, you know, thank them again for what they did, how they handled the situation, how LFD handled the situation once they were on scene afterwards, and, you know, really just thank them for, you know, showing all their training and investment. It really was worth it, and given the circumstance, I don't think we could have asked for much more. If you wanted to say anything?
Well, I just, you know, everybody thinks that, you know, nothing happens in Lakeville, but things certainly do. And again, you know, with the training that goes through for our emergency response, you know, they do need to be commended for, you know, their ability to respond to a situation such as that that we wouldn't expect happening in Lakeville.
Yeah, nope, no. That was waking up to those text messages was certainly not what I expected on any given day.
Not at all.
So moving forward, so we had originally had scheduled a Select Board meeting on November sixth. We're actually going to cancel that and push our October twenty-third meeting to October thirtieth. So thank you for making those adjustments to satisfy everybody's agenda, you know, personal schedules. We want to send out a reminder, so all residents, please respect the MBTA's right of ways and stay clear of all railroad tracks, especially those included in the new work for the South Coast Rail. The South Coast Rail Service, if you haven't heard, is being pushed out into twenty twenty-four. This is to allow more extensive testing of the safety systems, but during this time, trains will be operating on the tracks to test everything. So my understanding is since the project started, there's been a higher level of testing required by the federal government, so they're working through that now. So trains will be on the tracks. Please stay off the tracks the entire right of way. Couple exciting announcements from Lori Fahey, Council of Aging Director. They would like to announce that they have installed a new carport at the Council of Aging, so that means they'll have no more snow-covered van days. The carport was made possible from a grant awarded from Senator Michael J. Roderick's Empowerment Fund that is administered by the South Coast Community Foundation. Director Fahey would like to thank Paul Nee and the Lakeville DPW for their assistance and Senator Roderick's for all he does for the COA. Last but not least, Council of Aging is also looking for volunteers to offer medical rides to and from doctors' appointments for Lakeville seniors. These are non-assisted rides. Drivers receive mileage reimbursement, and if you have more information, please contact the Council of Aging at five oh eight nine four seven seven two two four. Do you have anything else you'd like to add tonight?
Just the fact that the open house for the, you know, Fire Department was scheduled originally for Saturday, and due to the weather, they moved it to Sunday, and my understanding is that this was their most well-received open house that they've had. You know, I know you were there, I was there. They had, you know, some actually live demonstrations with fires, and it was pretty impressive, and everybody, you know, seemed to be pretty in tune with everything that was going on. It was, it seemed to be quite the event.
Great event. You know, all the Fire Department members were showing, just, everybody was open, willing to talk, super patient with all the little kids running around, so thank you to them for that, you know, service to the residents. Okay, moving on. Ari, Town Administrator announcements, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was informed by Representative Oral last Thursday that the state House of Representatives has passed enabling legislation for the five-member Select Board. The bill's now pending for the Senate. The town has been awarded several grants, most recently one hundred and ten thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars from the State Department of Energy Resources to install a new HVAC system at the animal shelter, to upgrade insulation, and improve controls at Loon Pond Lodge. In addition, the town received four thousand five hundred and fifty dollars from the Department of Environmental Protection, support recycling activities, combined with the thirty thousand dollar grant we received from the Massachusetts Historical Commission for the Old Town Hall roof. The town has received one hundred and forty-five thousand four hundred and five dollars in grants for the state this year to date. There are also several still pending, Community Compact as well as ADA. The Animal Shelter also received a five thousand dollar donation from the Canada Foundation in Foxborough for their program. The New Fields Parking Lot Project has been successfully awarded to Lansing Construction. Fencing and signage will be next, but will likely require additional funding in addition to this initial appropriation. As I inform both of you and Member Fabian, that number came in a bit higher than we expected. We've issued the request for proposals for operation of Loon Pond Lodge. Bids are due on October twenty-sixth. We're preparing an overview of the ARPA Water Project for presentation to the Select Board at its next meeting. This project consists of water improvements at Ted Williams Camp, John Pond Park, installation of restroom facilities, water and septic at Old Town Hall. And finally, the next regular meeting of the Select Board will be at six P M. on Monday, October thirtieth, at the Lakeville Police Station. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any questions for Ari on those?
No, just wanted to point out that the first grant that Town Administrator mentioned, the hundred and ten thousand eight hundred and fifty-five from the State Department of Energy Resources, this is what would be considered under the Green Communities.
Competitive grant?
Yep.
Yeah.
So.
That's correct. Thank you.
Just wanted to just point that out.
I didn't want to overlingo it.
No, no, that's okay. You know, people in our town are really in tune with our green communities, so I just wanted to make sure that they knew that that was under that umbrella, too.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, thank you for highlighting those. I think every dollar that we can get from those kind of circumstances is excellent, frees us up to do other things we may not have been able to. And also, in the Animal Shelter, Tracy, can you remind me, that five thousand dollar donation was in response to our ACO's social media presence?
Yes, they reviewed multiple animal organizations, and they were looking for social media presence, and that's why he was awarded the grant.
All right, that's fantastic. Thank you, sir. All right, moving on then. Number three, discuss impossible vote to approve Select Board minutes of September eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Do we want to do this or hold this to the thirtieth with Member Fabian absent?
We can certainly hold it.
Okay, so we'll table that for the thirtieth, and that's September eighteenth, so we're still within time.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Perhaps if you or Member Carboni have any revisions, you can get them to me before the meeting, and then I'll make them, and then I'll re-present them. But the only, I mean, the only one I have is really, really slight. It's on page two, kind of the lower part of the last paragraph on the right-hand side, about three-quarters of the way down. It says here, he asked Mr. Lake Camera if there. I just wanted to just say maybe we need to add any at the end of that that I can give you.
You'll have to go.
Yeah, right. Of all of, you know, out of all of it, that was the only thing that popped out. That's so funny.
I did not have anything, Tracy.
Okay.
All right, so we'll hold that one. Our hearing's not scheduled till six fifteen, so we'll come back. Chairman Turkot, do you want to come up and we'll talk about the parks? So we've got number five, discuss impossible vote on access agreement for Free Lake Softball to make improvements to John Pond Park.
Hi, Melissa Turkot, Lakeville Parks Commission.
Welcome.
In spring of twenty twenty-two, the Lakeville, Freetown Lakeville Softball Association came to the Parks Commission and asked to rebuild Field Two, essentially, the dugouts and the backstop. They were approved. The Parks Commission said, yep, just let us know when. So this spring, they said, all right, it's time. So we went through it with them, and then I checked with Ari to make sure everything was good. So he said that we really needed to do a volunteer agreement since they were working on town property, and so that's where we are. So they're gonna rebuild dugouts on Field Two. Both dugouts, right now, they are cinder blocks, and they're going to redo them like Field One, so it's total concrete. And they're gonna extend the backstops and add netting so that the balls don't keep going into the conservation area and lost forever.
No trudging through there to get them, I suspect.
No, not without coming out scratched and poison ivied.
All right.
That's great.
Appreciate the efforts here. The only question I had, I got two, actually. I did see that the license was valid until June next year, June thirtieth next year. Did they indicate when they would like to commence some of this work?
Well, right after it's approved, they're gonna file for their building permit, so as soon as that's ready.
Okay.
Weather permitting, right? Because if we have a good winter, they can work all winter. If not, they have to wait till spring, but they said that they shouldn't have a problem getting it done by next June. That's the beginning of their season, so they'd like it done by then.
Okay, excellent. And your answer answered my second question, so that's necessary. Did you have any questions?
No, I just, I know that this park is very well utilized for softball, and to have that second field, you know, as nice as it is with the Field One, I think will, you know, continue to drive, you know, more participation.
Yeah, it's in pretty good shape. It's just, you have the dugouts, because the girls spend a lot of time in the dugouts, obviously. And Gloopers Ball uses Field Two, too, I believe, so.
Nice.
All right, well, then I'll make a motion that we approve the access agreement for Free Lake Softball to make improvements to John Pond Park.
Okay, step down, second motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, appreciate that. Please thank them for us, and it's nice to see they're willing to put in this effort.
Thank you, thank you both.
Thanks for coming tonight. Okay, moving on. Director Moniz, how are you? We've got, discuss impossible vote on a request from DPW Director for snowplow contractor rate changes. Let's hope for a weak winter.
I would like that very much, like we had last year.
That'd be great. Good evening, sir.
Frank often tells me that a light winter is a mixed blessing when it comes to these things.
Yeah, a few storms that are plowable isn't bad. To keep the contractors happy, and then they come back, all right, so. So this is just basically what I do every year, just putting the rates in line with Mass DOT. The top six rates are the ones we basically use for the whole year, and then the lower eight rates are more just there in case that a really bad winter hits and we need equipment, other than what we can handle on our own. The only real difference we have from Mass DOT is the eight-foot plow. Ours is higher. Reason being is because the eight-foot plows are much more valuable to us with cul-de-sacs and smaller roads and things like that. And then the addition I had this year, considering last year, even though we had a late winter, we never called them in, we still ended up really short on drivers as we added just one more hour to the bonus for paperwork submitted. So now they'll have two hours for a bonus for paperwork submitted prior to the contractor meeting, and then they get two hours for the contractor meeting itself, which totals four hours for anybody who gets all their paperwork in that's complete and shows up to the meeting for inspection.
Any questions? I had one minor one. I just want to ask Frank, just to make sure it wasn't an omission, codes thirty thousand and two thousand, we kept the same rate. Was that on purpose?
Thirty thousand, yes. So the rate didn't change for some reason.
Okay.
So we just kept it. And it's already a pretty competitive rate in that aspect. And in two thousand, same thing. Yeah, the rate didn't change on that year, which is just really a, two thousand's an attachment on a truck. But, yep.
All right, so percentage-wise, these are pretty minimal increases overall. Okay.
All right, well, then I'll make a motion to approve the request from the DPW Director for snowplow contractor rate changes as presented.
Step down in second to motion. All members in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, sir.
Thanks. One last thing I'll say just quick is, while I have, you know, the airtime is how important these contractors are and that we're desperately looking for contractors at this time.
Okay, excellent.
So I just figured I'd throw that out there.
We can add that to our announcements for every meeting until.
Maybe moving forward for the next month, it's, so it'll be great. I know Ari was doing it for me last year.
Do we ever put anything out on the webpage or Facebook or anything?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
Okay, so moving on to number seven, discuss impossible vote to appoint Lacy Marshall as Human Resources Director. Given that we don't have the full board, I don't know how far we want to take this this evening, but we can still have a discussion, and I know Ms. Marshall's here if she would like to give us any words.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
You have the hearing at six fifteen, and the applicants are here.
Oh, you're correct, and it is six fifteen exactly.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, so we will come back, if you don't mind. All right, so going back to number four, public hearing for a transfer of off-premises alcoholic beverages packer store license for one fifty-seven Bedford Street, Tamarack Liquors to Kentara Inc., DBA Town Liquors. If you don't mind, I'll get my cheat sheet out here. All right, first thing we're gonna do is read the legal notice that we put in the paper. Town of Lakeville Office of the Select Board, pursuant to Chapter one thirty-eight of the General Laws, the Lakeville Select Board, acting as the Licensing Board, will conduct a public hearing at six fifteen on Tuesday, October tenth, twenty twenty-three, on the application of Kentara Inc., DBA Town Liquors for a transfer of an all-alcoholic beverages package store license for the property located at one fifty-seven Bedford Street, Lakeville, Massachusetts. Said hearing will be held in the Rita Agarbit Community Room at the Lakeville Police Station located at three twenty-three Bedford Street, Lakeville, Massachusetts. All right, entertain a motion to open the hearing.
So moved.
Okay, second. Members in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, hearing is opened. Will anybody be testifying this evening on behalf of it? Okay, please state your name, address for the record.
Yeah, good afternoon, Attorney John Meradian, Democas Law Offices, fifty-six Central Avenue in Lynn. With me is Kierat Patel, the proposed manager of record of Kentara Inc.
All right, you gentlemen swear to tell us nothing but the truth this evening?
Sure do.
Excellent. All right, so procedure, pretty standard. All comments are supposed to be addressed to the chair, and we will then ask if you'd like to speak to the application, if there's anybody in the room that would like to make comment as well. So I'll open it up to you gentlemen, if you'd like to speak to the application, your intentions. I see we, let me pause first and say, Tracy, looks like all documentation's in that you need?
Yes, everything's fine.
Excellent. Thank you very much for getting that done.
Yep.
The only thing, did we get the check for the advertising from you?
I haven't.
You have it, okay, perfect.
Excellent, thank you.
So I'll explain what's going on, and then I'll take any questions you may have. So this is simply a transfer of the license to remain at the same location. Kierat has formed Kentara Incorporated to buy the package store known as Tamarack Wine Spirits at one fifty-seven Bedford Street. It's a change of business ownership. There's no change to the store footprint or layer anything like that, and we're seeking tonight a transfer of the license, approval of Kierat Patel here as manager of record, and a pledge of the license and inventory to Rockland Trust Company, as Rockland Trust is gonna finance this transaction. Kierat Sorry is experienced in alcohol retail sales. He owns a store in Barrica with his wife, and he owned a store in Newton with a beer and wine license. This will be his second store. He'll be the manager of record. He is TIP certified. They do use ID scanners in their stores to help combat underage alcohol sales, and they anticipate having three to four employees between part-time and full-time. He will be TIP certified also at that. The store hours will be permitted by law, eight A M. to eleven P M. Monday through Saturday, and then Sundays, ten A M. to eleven P M. But with that, is there any questions you may have regarding the application?
Did you have any?
I didn't. Everything looked like it was in order.
Only question I had, sir, since you do have an existing interest in another store, any infractions that we've had to deal with in the past?
He's run clean stores, no violations of alcohol sales. We take it very seriously, so.
Thank you, appreciate that. Hope that everything continues. All right, yes, ma'am?
Can I just ask, what's the hours on Sunday, please?
Ten A M. to eleven P M.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody else that has questions regarding this license transfer? No? Okay. We'll entertain a motion to close the hearing at this time?
So moved.
Second. All members in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, hearing is closed. Is there any further discussion that we have at this time?
Well, just, I'm glad that, you know, we're able to continue on the business, you know, at that location. Be sorry to, you know, see, you know, the owners, you know, move on, but it's nice to be able to, you know, keep the business alive and welcome the new, the new person to town, the business owner.
I think you're getting a great business and hope you do well with us, sir.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you, thank you.
All right, entertain a motion for the transfer of license?
So moved.
All right, let's read it out. So entertain a motion to approve the transfer of off-premises alcoholic beverages package store license from Tamarack Wine and Spirits, Inc. to Kentara, Inc., doing business as Town Liquors.
So moved.
Second. All right, all members in favor?
Carboni, aye.
Day, aye. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time this evening. You've got that check?
Yes.
Excellent. Now we can go back. Just wait a moment while they finish the side.
Good evening, thank you.
Good evening. Okay, so we are back to seven. Discuss impossible vote to appoint Lacy Marshall as Human Resource Director for the Town of Lakeville. Again, Member Fabian's here, so with respect to her, we'll see how far we go this evening. Ari, would you like to remind everybody of the process today?
Yeah, John Virella left the service of the town back in August. We advertised as Human Resources Director on usable job listing and placement sites, social media, and on the town's website. Town received fifty-three applications, selected six for interviews, of whom two subsequently withdrew, so four were actually interviewed. Interviews were held beginning the week of September eleventh. The interview panel consisted of myself, Town Clerk William Drain, Fire Chief Frank Michael O'Brien, Police Chief Matthew Perkins, and Public Works Director Frank Moniz, and Town Accountant Todd Hassett. It was the group's unanimous recommendation that Lacy Marshall for the position. Lacy's been with the Massachusetts Army National Guard, working most recently as the organization's Human Resource Manager. Overall experience consists of seventeen years in personnel management. She holds a master's degree in public administration, and my recommendation was to respectfully request the town approval he's hiring. The budgeted salary is ninety-two thousand two hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Ms. Marshall, welcome this evening. Thank you for coming. Do you want to start with anything, or?
Well, I wanted to thank our committee that was formed, you know, to conduct the interviews. I think that, you know, having, you know, sat on, you know, one of those types of committees before, it's not easy to, you know, to go through and try to identify, you know, a candidate that is a good fit, you know, for our organization. So, you know, thank you for coming in today, so we had a chance to actually meet you in person, too. And, you know, out of respect for, you know, those that have made the recommendation, and, you know, with Member Fabian not here, I would like Member Fabian to be able to, you know, be part of the discussion. So I'm not ready to make a, you know, appointment this evening, because I really think that Member Fabian should be here as a full complement of the board, because this is such a high-level position in our organization. But I still would like to have, you know, any conversation that we have. If you have any questions for us, and then, you know, we can certainly.
Yeah, I mean, I believe that's probably the best interest for everybody, given the position that it is, you know, but it was nice to, you know, I was able to speak to almost the entire screening committee. It was nice to hear every one of them say, there was no doubt in the room, and this was the person that we think is gonna be the strongest candidate. So it was very good words shared amongst all of them. Thank you for your service to the country. It looks like you've been there a long time, doing good things, many things that we're asking for in the job description. I don't know, feel free to decline if you'd like, but was there anything about, you know, having an opportunity to serve in this position that drew you to it? Was there anything about that drew you to wanting to apply to this position in general, or?
So, yeah, I spent, I actually spent twenty-three years in the Mass National Guard, and I got my master's degree in public administration, so I knew I wanted to come into the public sector. This job opportunity was perfect, right in the town that I live in, serving my own community, and then having the opportunity to maybe one day jump into that public administrator position. I understand that I don't have some of the background in the arbitration, so therefore I did put in for the SHRM, and I'll be testing. and I'll be testing for that in December, so I should, you know, also have that piece that I'm missing. And if there are any questions between now and when the next meeting is, please, you have my number, call me, I'm willing to come meet and speak with you.
Alright, appreciate it. Ari, then, to speak to Ms. Marshall's, you know, comment there, our next contract negotiation is how far off at this point?
Oh, we're going into arbitration with police.
Right.
Which is really, honestly, that's mostly overseen by council.
Yep.
The other two contracts have three, within the first year, they're up for three more years.
Yeah, so most of them are tied up at this point, besides the one arbitration issue.
Right.
Okay, excellent. Any specific questions you'd like, Ms. Marshall?
No, no, your resume was very impressive, and I was happy to see that you had your MPA. Public service is wonderful, I think it's a calling, and, you know, for those of us who, you know, have been, I guess, serving in one capacity or another, do it because they care about their community. Is it always easy? No. But it really is rewarding, and so it's nice to hear that, you know, having that MPA, that you are interested in maybe pursuing, you know, higher, you know, level, because that's nice for, you know, career growth, as well as personal growth, so, yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would encourage all members to continue, as I have several times now, to reach out to Ms. Marshall, through me or directly to her, either one doesn't matter to me, she's very personable and very approachable. And, you know, ask any questions you might have, and just get a better sense of what, you know, what she's all about, coming into the next meeting.
Excellent, thank you. Yeah, with that, I don't have any other specific questions this evening.
Okay.
Our next, and I really hate to drag things out like this, I know what that feels like. Our next meeting is scheduled for the thirtieth, but there's nothing saying we couldn't have another one in the intermediate if it felt like the best thing to do. So I guess, you know, my only ask would be like, is that gonna be a burden?
That's fine, I can make it.
You're sure?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I appreciate the flexibility.
Thank you, guys.
Alright, thank you, it was a pleasure meeting you, and hopefully we'll speak soon. Alright, moving on, number eight, discuss impossible vote on the warrant from November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, special town meeting. Ari, we have received back the slightly edited version from Town Council. I reviewed that, I didn't see any significant edits, just tightening up of some language it appeared.
Well, probably the most significant changes were in the fire alarm one.
Yep.
Those are some things that came in, and again, I do want to apologize, the, we received edits from Town Council within the period that I asked for, and we got a slew of additional edits last Friday in the afternoon. You know, I was not happy about that, and I made that clear to council that I was unhappy about that. And then I asked council to provide us with, so we basically had three different documents of edits. And so I asked councils, you know, give us one document.
Right.
And the single document is what you have here.
Okay, so everything is converged into this one single document? Alright, appreciate that. So at this point, we've got, this should be the final, that we can vote on this evening if we like, which we probably should, given the timeframe. And then we would be doing warrant review on the thirtieth.
Thirtieth.
Likely with Finance Committee.
Yeah.
For their recommendations.
Yep, I've already spoken with Mr. Plonka about that.
Okay, excellent.
Probably at some point need to read the warrant. I, I.
Oh, yes.
I don't, you know, I don't want to wait till warrant review, or whether you want to do that tonight, but at some point you gotta read the warrant.
Yeah, yep.
Yes, ma'am. I would recommend that if you read for the fire alarm, Article seven, just like the beginning, and then vote to waive the rest of the reading, and the same thing for the OSRD article.
You're saying they're a little too long to read in one sitting?
Unless you want to read it.
You could, I'll grab some popcorn.
Well, Member Carbone, did you have any questions over the edits that came back?
No, no, I, it's pretty clear, and I understand, you know, what the intent was for these, so.
They're mostly things like clarifying the Fire Chiefs Enforcement Authority, stuff like that.
Yeah, minor things.
You know, and, you know, bylaws, you know, they're always fluid, because times change, circumstances change, so. But I think for, you know, the purposes of what the intent was for here, I think it's a, it's a great start to have that in here. I did have one question, though, and I know that our inner Mark Breznik is here in the audience. The Planning Board has always been, you know, really good about scheduling, you know, the hearings in time for the review. They're all scheduled prior to warrant review?
Good evening, Mark.
Yeah, the planning board hearings is scheduled for Thursday.
Okay.
At seven PM. I believe right here, in the police station.
You know, and, you know, just to mention that, you know, anytime we have a change in a, you know, in a bylaw, or, you know, if it's a zoning change, you know, having those hearings and people attending the hearings can hear the, you know, the reasoning why, you know, the changes put forward, they have an opportunity to ask questions. You know, it's a little bit more in-depth than what we do here at warrant review. So I always like to, you know, direct our residents to, you know, please tune into the Planning Board hearings, because it's, you know, will help their decision-making when they're on town floor.
And if I may, I think I, I don't know if I said in a previous meeting, I think I've shared this with you, like, I really would like to see some kind of visual aid for residents to say, this is how things could change with and without this potential bylaw in place. I don't know what those will look like, but given the length of the text, and we're not all experts in your field, I think it would be nice to kind of have some examples of what that could mean to them, so that, you know, before town meeting, so that when they get to town meeting, they understand what are we actually voting on.
We should have that document ready for warrant review, I think.
Okay.
Oh, that's a good idea.
And then what we'll do is once I, usually we always have a recommendation, like a short, couple sentences explanation of what the article is, but we'll have a little bit more explanation with, like you say, some pictures of the alternatives between conventional and then OSRD subdivisions, people can visually see a couple different types of examples, so.
That'd be great, I appreciate that greatly. You know, myself have been confused when you sometimes show up at town meeting for the first time, and you're trying to flip through and understand what it represents.
That's definitely a helpful aid. And I also want to say, too, that, you know, once we, you know, have our vote, I'm happy to say that there are ten articles for our special town meeting and not twenty-something, twenty-nine. So, you know, probably won't be a four-hour, five-hour meeting, but.
Don't doubt it.
Try six hours.
Six-hour meetings.
That was last time, yeah.
Okay.
And this is just the voting of the warrant, the residents have the final say in all of these. So there will be opportunity for debate, amendments, any other special surprises. Alright, so we want to read it perhaps on review night? Is that easier?
I think that might be helpful, especially with FinCon being here, too.
Yep.
Moderator will be here, too.
Right, right. I think that would probably be a really good use of the read.
Hold on for that to now.
Mr. Chairman, should the Planning Board attend, or maybe not the Planning Board, but the Chairman of the Planning Board?
I mean, perhaps the Chair, and if Mark's here, they can help us through.
So you can mention that to Mark Knox.
If he's available, great, if not, we'll pick him up.
Or any sponsor of the, you know, any of the articles, because I think Chief O'Brien, right. And the Community Preservation Committee, so any sponsor would be.
We'll make sure that Nancy needs to know.
Yep.
We are the majority, we have four or five of them in here, so. Yeah, there's a few from Plan, one, two, three, four by planning, because the signed bylaw is two different ones. Yep, all the sponsors would be great.
Yeah, yeah, we'll make sure we have that.
Alright.
I'll do the usual, that little crosswalk check-off sheet that I do.
Oh, right.
Like, you know, supporting and all that stuff.
Alright, perfect.
That was helpful.
I've got it all set up.
Given the minimum edits, I'm happy to vote on this this evening.
Alright.
There's nothing crazy in there.
Alright, then what I'll do is I'll make a motion to approve the warrant as presented with the council changes that were provided for the November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three special town meeting.
Okay, I'll step down and second the motion, all members in favor?
Carbone, aye.
Day, aye, thank you very much, so we'll look forward to warrant review on the thirtieth. Are you gonna put, Ari, this as is now, up on the website?
Yeah.
Because I know our packet probably had the pre.
You'll, the board will need to sign the warrant.
Okay.
Then we can put it up.
Alright, so let them know the one in the packet didn't quite have all the changes refer to the posted one.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, moving on to number nine then, discuss impossible vote to approve and sign the bond anticipation note, also known as a ban, if you ever hear us say that, for the second borrowing for the Assawamsett Elementary School window project. Good evening, Erica, how are you? Well, thanks, Ari, that project nearly done, just some doors now, right?
As of last week, there were like four windows left.
Okay, good.
And the doors, they'd already started on the doors. There's been some disruption to the project because of the weather when it came to the doors. They're kind of, they're limited in when they can do, when you do the doors, you have to, you're pulling out the full opening, and you gotta do the asbestos from the H and A, it has to be certified, then you can put back in, they can't do that on a night shift, because it needs to be safe for the kids, it has to be certified, it needs to be cleaned from asbestos. So they're doing them over weekends, and as you know, the weather in the weekends has not been perfect.
No, like fourteen of the last seventeen weekends have been.
So they're still, they're still saying we're gonna get done by October twentieth, but, you know, we'll see.
It looks good, I mean, I think the front side's all done now, it looks much nicer.
Yeah, it looks nice.
Alright, back to you, how are you this evening? Alright, would you like to walk us through what we have here?
Sure.
Thank you.
So it's the second piece of the borrowing. It came in, well, we put out to bid two million, and it came back with a five percent interest rate, and the premium of eleven thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars.
Okay, alright, and we'll have this paperwork on the twelfth, I think you noted, is that correct?
I'm sorry?
And we'll have the actual paperwork to sign on the twelfth, or did that come in a little earlier?
Nope, we have it.
We got it now?
Tonight, I believe.
Oh, perfect, good, a couple days early, you don't have to track us down later, nice. Okay, Ari, do you have any comments on this?
No, sir.
Okay, any questions for the Treasury Director?
I do not, but thank you again for facilitating this for us.
Appreciate it, it'd be nice to see this project done and paid for eventually. Alright, if there's no further questions, entertain a motion to sign the bond anticipation note as presented.
So moved.
Whoop.
You gave us a vote, didn't you? Do you have it with you?
Oh, the vote sheet.
I would know one thing, as the chairman, now I think about it, the rate on this, you know, bands are typically very low rates, just interest only. But just in case what the world's like out there, this rate's five percent for a band. It's hot. No reflection on the town, it just is what it is out there.
Yeah, I mean, our credit rating's pretty darn good.
Double A plus.
Yeah, so what have you seen in the past for when the world is more normal?
I can tell you, in, say, pre-COVID, typically expected a one and a half to two percent rate in a band.
Okay, so yeah, definitely a change. Alright. Okay, so. Okay, so the specific language, alright, so, very particular language you have to use. So entertain a motion to adopt a vote prepared by bond council in connection with the sale and approval of the town's October bond anticipation notes. Alright, step down in second, all members in favor?
Carbone, aye.
Day, aye, thank you very much, appreciate you coming this evening, and we'll get these signatures back as soon as we can. You may. Alright. Moving on, item ten, discuss impossible vote to approve public way license application for Charles River Wheelers for the Cranberry Ride on October fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Let's see, the form looked like we had all the responses we expect so far. We have collected the fee?
Yes.
Excellent. Let's see, Tamarack Park for a water stop. Just checks up in here, please, good, good, good. Ari, I'm sure you're good with this, even though we aren't signature on here yet?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I always wait for the board.
That's fine. Any problems with this event in the past that we're aware of?
They've only done it once.
Just once before?
Last year, yeah, and didn't hear anything.
No.
Excellent. Okay, are there any questions?
And this isn't, this isn't a race, it's a basically bicyclist club that they just get together and just go on rides.
Right, yeah, we're a water stop on the way, it looks like.
Correct. No questions?
Okay, me either. So, let's see, entertain a motion to approve the Charles River Wheelers ride on October fifteenth, twenty twenty-three at eight AM.
So moved.
Alright, step down and second the motion, all members in favor?
Carbone, aye.
Day, aye, thank you very much. And we'll go on to our next event. Item eleven, discuss impossible vote to approve public way license application for Mullane Hill Christian Academy for Veterans Five K on November fourth, twenty twenty-three. Same question, we've got the fee, it looks like, you see all the same sign-offs, any past problems to be aware of?
Not that I've heard of.
Okay, me either. Let's see, we've got insurance, we've got everything.
I think they changed their route last year, like, slightly, I think, if I remember correctly.
A little bit, yeah.
Yeah, and it seemed to work out well then.
I honestly can't read the map that was put in the packet, but it. Is it Staples Shore Road? Okay.
Alright, well, I make a motion that we approve the public way license application for Mullane Hill Christian Academy for Veterans Five K on November fourth at, from between eight and twelve.
Alright, step down and second the motion, all members in favor?
Carbone, aye.
Day, aye, thank you. Okay, moving on. Discuss impossible vote in regards to notice from Massachusetts State Lottery Commission regarding a Keno license for Joe and Chloe Gas, thirty-three Bedford Street. Tracy, if I remember, basically, no action means no disapproval, or whatever you want to say.
If the board doesn't feel that they want to have Keno there, then we would submit a letter to the Mass State Lottery asking for a public hearing with them.
Okay.
And if you're okay with it, then no action is needed.
So they're just looking for an objection and nothing more?
Correct.
Okay, alright. I have no reason to have an objection.
No, they're doing.
There's, there's. I'm not aware of anything that that business is owing us right now for any other pending issue, so no reason to bring them in. Okay, so I guess there's nothing, moving on, I guess. Moving to thirteen, discuss impossible vote on a request from Gurgis Automotive Services to revise the name on their Class Two Auto Sales License. So it looks like, monthly change, it looks like the auto sales license doesn't currently match what's on the business certificate, so this is just bringing them in alignment, okay, appreciate that.
Alright, I'll make a motion that we approve the request of Gurgis Automotive Services to revise the name on their Class Two Auto License, Auto Sales License.
Okay, to match the business certificate?
Correct.
Okay, step down and second the motion, all members in favor?
Carbone, aye.
Day, aye, thank you very much. Move on to, I don't know, fourteen, discuss impossible vote to approve the request to connect the Taunton Water for thirty-five Myrick Street. Tracy, thank you for checking with the Planning Board, looks like they've already approved on July twenty-seventh. Also looks like you fixed their application so that it was representative of the three units that would be there, they aware of that fix?
Yes.
Okay, excellent.
I confirmed it with them.
Thank you very much. Let's see, at that, when it was done, we've got the email showing it's approved. And those are the standard numbers I remember for the resident, single residential house.
Yep.
Okay, any questions?
I have none, so I'll make a motion to approve the request to connect to Taunton Water for thirty-five Myrick Street.
Step down and second the motion, all members in favor?
Carbone, aye.
Day, aye, thank you very much. Thanks for catching that, Tracy. Moving on to number fifteen, we have discuss impossible vote to approve the request for a one-day beer and wine license for Harper Lane Brewery, who will be at the Elliott Farm Festival on October fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Looks like all of the expected documents. Okay, looks like all of the expected documentation is in there?
Yes.
Okay, um, is there, do you know if they or Elliott is having a rain date for this event, just in case? Because I know our next item, that showed up and we won't have a chance to.
They, um, they didn't discuss a rain date.
Okay.
Um, so I have no idea.
All right. Any questions on this application?
Um, the hours of, um, the event, I believe, if I recall, are, were the same as other events that they held last year, so.
I think so, yeah.
Twelve to seven.
Yep. All right, then, um, I'll make a motion to approve the request for a one day beer and wine license for Harper Lane Brewery for Elliott Farm Fall Festival on October fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, from twelve, uh, PM to seven PM.
Step down and second that motion. All members in favor?
Carbone, aye?
Day, aye. Thank you very much. Uh, moving on to number sixteen, very similar, uh, discuss impossible vote to revise the special one day liquor license for Decanted Incorporated for the rescheduled Angers Conway Farm Event on October fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Um, so that event did get rescheduled due to weather, uh, so they are requesting that we change the date on their existing, like, one day license.
What was the previous date?
Uh, last, was it last Saturday?
I believe so.
The seventh?
I don't remember. I think it was September.
Was it the end of September? Oh, it was the, I know, because I had, I had conflicting event that day. It was the twenty-third, I believe.
I mean, it's just, it's irrelevant, but I was curious.
That's fine.
I knew we voted on this, but, um, I'll make a motion, um, to approve the revised date for the special one day liquor license for Decanted Inc. for the rescheduled Angers Conway Farm Event scheduled for this upcoming, um, October fourteenth, twenty twenty-three.
All right, step down and second the motion. Uh, all members in favor?
Carbone, aye?
Day, aye. Thank you. All right. All right, agenda item seventeen, discuss impossible vote on request from the council on aging to appoint Rosemary DeKloes as an alternate member on the council aging board of directors, and we had a letter from the board of directors making that request, um, if she was, if she's approved, her term would expire July thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
I'll make a motion, um, to approve the request from the council on aging to appoint Rosemary DeKloes as an alternate member on the council on aging board of directors with a term to expire July thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
All right, so, thank you very much. Um, eighteen, uh, revisit discussion on town hall operating hours.
Do we have to, we have to finish the vote?
Did we not even vote on that? I'm sorry.
To finish the vote, yeah.
Oh, that would be wonderful, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, step down and second the motion. All members in favor?
Carbone, aye?
Day, aye. Did we finish it?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Agenda number eighteen, revisit discussion of town hall operating hours.
Um, yeah, I asked it, um, thank you again for putting this on here, um, I, I think we walked away without having, you know, a clear directive, um, you know, as to what the next steps would be, so I would like, um, if we can, to, um, table this, um, to maybe the thirtieth, uh, depending upon how long that agenda will be. Um, I'd like to do a little bit more research, um, you know, with what we've done in the past and work with the, uh, town administrator uh, to come up with a solution, um, you know, that we can present.
Okay.
You know, to have the board review, as the select board is the, um, the authority to decide the operating hours for town hall, so I'd rather have, um, a solution and a recommendation than us trying to hash it out during a meeting, so.
Yep, that's appreciated, and, uh, I hope the member Favian will be back with us for that meeting. All right, so we'll table that to a future meeting, um, maybe the thirtieth, maybe later, depending on the agenda. Um, move forward to number nineteen, building committee update. So this is a standing item we put on our agendas every time now, as these are long-term projects. Um, member Favian's not here, but Ari, were there any updates on the senior center?
Next meeting is on Wednesday, October eighteenth.
Okay.
Um, and, uh, there'll be a further refinement of the, uh, of the, um, schematic design and, um, and and, and program configuration.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, fire station building committee, member Carbone.
Yes, um, we held a meeting, um, two weeks ago and, uh, reviewed the submittals for the architectural design firm, and, uh, we had four submittals, we identified our top three, they was pretty consistent across, um, all members on the ranking, um, so we, uh, are meeting, I wanna say, is it, I'm so confused. It's, we're meeting on the eighteenth, and it's after the senior center meeting. Um, to interview, um, the three, uh, firms that were identified, and, um, from there, you know, hopefully we'll have a, a vote that night, as we did before when we did the OPM, um, interviews, so that we can bring the recommendation back to the select board, uh, for, um, you know, approval.
All right.
The fire station building committee will also be meeting with the Parks Commission on the nineteenth, um, and will be coming as a, as a committee uh, to discuss the feasibility study, uh, results regarding the site location, recommendations that came out of that, um, because there were three, uh, locations on the parks land that, um, were identified, um, so it's important to have the Parks Commission, uh, you know, part of the conversation, um, you know, as we, as we move this forward, so, uh, they are very happy to, to have us.
Yeah, my understanding is that, um, the building committee did also engage natural heritage for that part.
That is correct.
Yes.
Yes.
Do we anticipate anything back from them anytime soon, or is that gonna be a bit further out?
Um, I think it's probably gonna be a bit out, um, it's.
Yeah, there's probably gonna be some preliminary work done, but the, the, the line share that'll be done was, they have a, you know, once determined where sort of assessing what, what sites, what the feasibility is at different sites, what the considerations are, and once you dive in on where you're gonna go, then there's more work to be done.
Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, anything else?
Uh, no, that's, that's it.
Okay. Um, Old Colony feasibility study, um, myself, um, and a number of others met, uh, last week with that building committee or feasibility study committee. And the next phase is putting out an RFS for an OPM for the project. Um, I think I distributed materials after the last meeting, they were looking for any comments or additional questions that they would like, um, to send out to those, uh, OPM RFSSs, um, they are looking for feedback by tomorrow, so I'll probably send a couple of things back, um, to Director Superintendent Polanski. The publishing of the RFS, I might get this slightly wrong, but I wanna say it's somewhere around November eighth that they're gonna put the publishing out, and they are going to tag that project as anywhere from, I believe, a hundred and ten to two hundred and twenty million dollars, depending on what the scope of it ends up being. So that could be leaving the programs as is, adding a couple more programs, such as plumbing and HVAC, you're adding three or four total new programs, and the, I always get it wrong, is it MSBA or MMBSA? They have said that we can go anywhere, well, the district could go anywhere from five hundred and sixty to eight hundred and ten students, so they're gonna kinda work with them to determine like what the right size is for the schools, that's a a very large number, um, obviously that could be anywhere in there. I did ask the question, just to get clarity, was that the all-in number? Did that include things that would not be reimbursed by the state, including things like demolition or any equipment that a vocational school requires that a traditional school does not, and they said, yes, it did include that, um, based on estimates from other programs that it happened. Um, the questionnaires they're putting out for the RFS do contain a number of questions that were from other recent vocational schools that went through this process, um, so those have kind of been vetted through other, um, projects out there, uh, but it's a, it's a very big number, and, um.
Effective reimbursement will probably only be about forty percent.
Somewhere around there is the expectation, yes. Um, they're, they are pushing for help on the hill to, um, get that program to recognize that vocational schools are different and that other things should be considered, but I don't, I don't expect to see any change between now and this project.
Old Colony's not the only book looking for that.
Right, exactly, but, um, you know, we'll see. So more to come on that. I think, uh, they're expecting, once that publishes, like I said, I believe it's around November eighth, two to three weeks for responses, and then they'll start going through, narrowing down, um, what the finalists are. Yes, ma'am.
What is an RFS?
I believe it's the Request for Services. At least that's what they said that evening. It could be a different term.
I think that's correct.
Yeah, that's right, for.
Thank you. That's all I had on that. Um, new business? Only thing I have was we had a lead, lead asked Tracy about discussing it here, which we can't, it's not an agenda, but we could probably do it on the thirtieth, is Open Space Committee has requested, uh, surfeit hours to help finish up the open space plan, um, so I don't know if we wanna put together something for the thirtieth on that. I know you have a lot of experience with surfeit, I don't know if it's worth meeting with them, the town planner, to figure out what's been done, what's left, and, you know, the number of hours they're asking for, is that anywhere near enough? Or is there some other mechanism to get some of these things?
Twenty hours isn't gonna be enough.
Yeah, so.
We, we know that, we know that, we know that there is a list of things they can do for twenty, every twenty hours.
Okay.
And they've given us that list.
All right, so then we gotta figure out the delta.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and determine if that, if the twenty hours would bring the plan to a point, um, of being, you know, approved, or if these other additional hours, um, you know, I wanna see this, you know, brought through the home stretch.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's a very important plan, um, I think it's just been, um, just kind of out there, I'd like to drive this home, I'd like to get this home, so, um, I think it would be, I, I believe I understand that, um, you know, there is a list of items that, you know, with timeframe.
Right.
So maybe it would be worth having, um, you know, just a brief meeting as to kind of where we are now, what we need to do to get it home, and what that timely timeframe would look like.
So do you, the thirtieth might be a heavy lift.
It's a heavy lift on the thirtieth.
Yeah.
Yeah, so maybe right after town meeting?
The, the, the challenge is that you have the thirtieth, you've got the thirteenth, which is the meeting before, you could do as part of that pre-meeting before town meeting if you wanted. Or, um.
You'd rather be here and screen.
And the next one's December, because of schedules.
Because of the three weeks, yeah.
It's December fourth.
And we could even consider a remote meeting if there's a day everybody's available.
That's what the board wants, that's fine.
Yeah, we just need forty-eight hours, right, so, you know, we can, then just have that as of one.
So do you wanna do a full joint meeting with Open Space, or just provide Chairman Knox, or what would you, what do you think?
I think I would like to have, I mean, if the Open Space Committee, I mean, see what, you know, the chair wants, um, to do, maybe she'll represent the, you know, the, the committee, um, but the committee may wanna be there, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with them all being there, I'd like, though, like you said, for the town hall hours, it'd be nice to come with a proposal that we can look at. So if the chair and, and town planner wanna sit down and figure, hammer some of this out, um, ahead of time, to come with something.
Yeah.
Instead of just starting from scratch.
It's fine.
Um, but I agree, I'd like to get this done, um, you know, we're constantly begging people to apply to be on boards and committees, and we have a board that wants to get this done, so let's help them. All right, so we'll work on that at a future meeting. Um, any other new business? Any old business? Okay, uh, correspondence wise, we've got a couple of nice letters from the Lakeville Arts Council thanking both, uh, Lakeville Police Department and DPW for all their work and making sure that the the grounds looked excellent and everybody was nice and safe the day of the festival. Um, Mother Nature was not friendly, but they got through and had a very nice event.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we also have a couple of notices from Comcast, uh, let's see here. Programming advisory, so the Ovation Channel will be relocated to the B Two Entertainment here, the change will occur on September twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, which were already passed. And the I, INS, I NSP Channel, we relocated to the More Sports and Entertainment Pack that happened on December, uh, sorry, September twenty-sixth. And on September twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, the Calm Life On Demand was renamed to Zen Life by Stingray. And with that, I believe we've run out. Anything else? Okay, entertain a motion to adjourn at six fifty-nine?
So moved.
Okay, second the motion. All members in favor?
Carbone, aye?
Day, aye. Thank you very much, everybody.